I'll call the meeting to order. The regular meeting of the Mount Holly Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 15th. Are there any changes to the agenda? There are none. The agenda is approved. Approval of minutes, we have minutes from our public hearing and our regular meeting of April 17. Has everyone reviewed them? Any changes, additions, corrections? Okay, there are none. Minutes are approved. Reports, administrative officer, anything to report?
It is construction season.
I can tell.
Okay, I think there are eight BCRs. Gnome on Healdon Road for a timber-framed shed, seven feet by six feet. Stevens on Shumpike Road, a 55 by 110-foot garage for storage. Filscov on Frost Hill Road, a 30 by 40-foot addition to the existing house, including additional kitchen area, living room, bedroom, bathroom, and closet. The wastewater permit allows for that additional bedroom. Rasmus on Belmont Road, detached garage, 34 by 40 feet. Passmore on Tarbleville Road, basically removing and bumping out the garage, including a dormer. Rizza on Shumpike Road, adding heat to garage and finishing the interior of the garage. Gero on Maple Hill Road, 54-foot by 48-foot garage. Town on Route 103, a 12 by 28-foot deck. Porter on Bolswill Road, construction of a 36 by 48-foot workshop and dwelling, which is included within wastewater permit approved, I believe it was last year. And I confirmed that with him, although he hadn't included it on the form. And the last one is BL Capital Holdings on Turnpike Road for a new construction, residence for which there was no wastewater permit, but I have spoken to the owner, who is in the process of getting that permit, and will share the details with me as soon as he's got them.
Where is that one?
On Turnpike Road. It's right on the border with Shute Street.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, anything else?
That's a lot.
My report, I think everyone, I don't remember if we made their report last month, but the Belmont Village designation was renewed very easily, so that's good news. I think we already reported that the town plan was approved by the original planning commission. I think that was last month's report, so I think that's it. We have been CC'd on Act 250 correspondence for the site down by rights construction. And as far as I know, that's still sort of on pause. State is asking for more information. I think you guys all got that last email. I think that's it. So let's go right into correspondence, subdivision proposals. Mr. Gero.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
So I'd like to start off with, I wasn't in attendance at the meeting last night, but I understand there was some discussion.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to hear it, what you had to say.
Well, basically, I just outlined the procedures that were inadequate here. The whole subdivision, starting with the subdivision application, you know, how, because there was no, they didn't have any, there was no way to follow it to be able to perform the meeting requirements. The first thing on that list should have been, just go to the NER website, and all of the forums, all of the information you need is there. That's basically what I was outlining. I did thank you guys for your service, because I know how important what you guys do for this community is, and how few people want to step forward and do that. But then the part of the, you know, trying to hold me to relinquishing rights to that piece of property that I have, to make this process go smoothly. And after speaking to my council, I said, "That's a totally different issue." You know, there's encroachments, I've known about them for years, and I've never confronted anybody about them. I've just let them be. Legally, legally, I could pursue that in court. I choose not to. But I don't see, and I just wanted to point it out to the select board, I don't see the, there's nothing anywhere that refers to anything like that. Obviously, that will become a known item, you know, when the purchaser comes along, but I don't understand why it would have any bearing on holding up this subdivision. That's all I would bring it up. You know, this whole wastewater thing too. I mean, Andy was, you know, trying to insist that I get another one. That whole process has been revamped at the state level. You know, in 87 or in 2007, when they renewed that and they took away that 10.1 acre exemption, that's when they swept all of them under their guidelines. So essentially, when I did my wastewater permit to them to get that reference of the language that was necessary on my deed, I had to do the subdivision. The surveyors had to create the drafts and the plots, make out the application for their permit to the state, pay them a $300 and some fee to be able to get that approved, to bring the permit that wasn't in existence that you asked for to you, so that you could approve me to go back to the state. It's kind of a little bit elusive. And I was trying to just point out quite simply, I agree with you. That ordinance is outdated, and if it's all outdated, then it's all outdated. You can't pick and choose the parts of it you want to try to enforce.
Okay, anything else?
No.
So I'll try to address a couple of things there. The first one, as I heard it, is you suggested that the state has a website to follow permit information. Yes, they do. It's called the Permit Navigator.
That's correct.
And actually is a required element for our application form.
Correct.
So I'm curious where you got the application form that you used.
I didn't. I picked up a subdivision package here in the town office that referred me to what procedures I needed to follow. And it wasn't until you sent me out looking for that deferral permit. After that meeting, I went home the next day and I spent three days on the computer.
I'm just curious about the actual application form that was used.
That was, my surveyor, the engineering firm that I hired to do it, they filled out the application,
Okay.
along with all of the information that was required, and then I got submitted. And I don't see how that's, there's any possibility that you could have done anything here prior to them doing that.
I'm sure it followed.
There's no way I could have proceeded with any further maps or documentation for you without going through that with the state. And that should have been like right at the top of the list. You need to do this with the state before you can come back here. The only thing that really was relevant was the sketch plan review. That's about the only thing you could do here to get an oversight as to what is going to be done.
Right.
And then from that point, then we can create these, which was necessary to go to the state.
I'm familiar with the process.
Okay, well.
So what I'm asking you is, what we now know is unfortunately, the application form that was filled out apparently by your surveyor is the wrong one. It's an old one, very old one. And the latest current version of the application form does exactly what you suggest. It refers you to the Permit Navigator. And you go to that site, you put in your parcel ID or your spam number, and it tells you what permits you'll need and what state departments you need to contact to do this work. So the next thing you mentioned is that the deferral language is obsolete and outdated. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, that's incorrect. So there were state wastewater rules that were enacted that got away with the old spaghetti law deferrals. This kind of deferral is different. And in fact, the wastewater that you permit, that you just got includes deferral language. So those deferrals that you think are obsolete are not. They're what you in fact got and what you would need if you don't want to develop the lot. So the next thing is I take great exception to you picking on one of my commissioners. Andy didn't tell you anything, first of all, that was untrue, or anything that this commission didn't agree to. We all agreed to the suggestions we made to you last month. And as I remember it, and I think the minutes will probably reflect this, we offered several suggestions on ways forward to avoid a conflict with your neighbors that would result in a lawsuit. I still think that's the best approach. As you point out, a lawsuit is certainly one way you can get out of this. It's not my best one. It's not the friendliest one. It's not the cheapest one. But we didn't tell you what to do, and we didn't make any demands on what you needed to do to go forward. However, in front of this commission, you told us that your neighbor was violating the law and that they had moved survey monuments. I'm sorry, but we all agreed that that was a blocker for moving forward. We're not going to agree to record a new survey with that kind of uncertainty, or certainly with, you know, sort of being complicit in, or being a party to a lawsuit. And the next thing I heard you, well, let's just stop there. So let's go back to, if we had followed the current application form, I think we would have probably, this would have been slightly more streamlined. And unfortunately, that's what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to start over with that. But I have a question. Are you familiar with any previous commercial use of your property?
Yeah.
Okay. Were you in fact permitted a development permit through Act 250?
Yes.
Okay. Are you aware that jurisdiction is ongoing?
My company, Daniel, was supposed to be delving into getting released from that. That company is not any longer in business. They've been gone for 10, 15 years.
At any point in this process, up until this moment, have you disclosed to us that your property is under Act 250 jurisdiction?
The property never was. The change of use of building was the only, you know, when I went through this way, way back.
Well, then your surveyor didn't properly inform you and/or your lawyer didn't properly inform you, but your entire acreage is subject to Act 250. Were you aware of that?
I was not.
Okay. The next issue is the question of the boundary line dispute. I may have misheard, I overheard you say something to Faith. Are you now taking your latest surveys back? Because I had heard, and you can correct me if I heard incorrectly, that a survey was made available to us that, when you put it, acknowledged the existing boundaries or acknowledged the existing monumentation, so to avoid any conflict. Can you please update us as to the current status of that boundary dispute?
I'm just leaving it to the deeds that been filed. When you pull up a state parcel on the state parcel finder, all of these point to where the deeds, where the surveyor said they were supposed to be.
Okay, so I think we got an email that said a set of plaits had been provided to us that were modified to show or to follow the existing monumentation on the ground. Do we, are we no longer in possession of those surveys? You're taking them back?
Yes.
Okay.
Because all of the deeds, all of the surveys from here in town, they all refer to them where they were reflected before.
Is there a reason why you're taking them back? That you no longer want them to be part of this application?
Well, now you got me totally confused, because you just said you're going to make me have to start all over again.
Well, we will need a new form, but we still need plaits and surveys. So I'm curious as to whether we actually have a survey or a plat that resolves the boundary line dispute, because I thought as of yesterday, we did.
Well, as my council pointed out to me, that as soon as I relinquish my right to be able to enforce the boundaries as reflected in town records and state records, when I provide that document that you want to be able to attach to my deed or to the deed, that does have, it has no other relatable reference to it.
You could, right, you do not have to. You are not being required to take part in a boundary line adjustment with your neighbors. You are certainly free to pursue legal action against them.
I'm not, I don't choose to do it either.
However, what we have made clear, I think probably this is the third time, is that we are not comfortable moving forward until that issue is resolved. So let's leave that there. We do not have plaits for this application, and we need to have a new form filled out. So on the issue of Act 250, we have, Faith has had an email correspondence with the Act 250 coordinator for our district. You have all seen it? All the commissioners have seen the email, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll summarize, and I want to get the commission to tell me whether that's there as well. My reading of the email says, "A subdivision shall not move forward until there is an amendment made to the Act 250 permit." Did everyone else read that in bold?
Yep.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay, so we were all in agreement that Act 250 certainly takes precedence here. And I do not think we will ask for, you know, any further explanation on why that information was withheld from us. I'll accept your answer that you were unaware of it.
I personally was. The company referenced it. The gal in the ARNR in Rutland referenced it, but it was a simple, they just had to make some applications.
Let's just leave it there. We're going to accept that answer at face value. Is there any further discussion on this matter today? Do we have anything else to say? Does anybody else have anything to say? Stephen? Andy?
No, nothing more. Well summarized.
I think that's it. So we'll have you fill out a new application form, and we'll wait to hear back from either you or your surveyor when you complete that form. And we will be a party to the Act 250 amendment. So, any more comments today?
Could you send me that formal information, Faith?
Yeah, I can do that.
I didn't, I had no party to any of that. The company that I heard did all of this.
Understood. Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anything else on this matter from the general public? Okay. I will add one more thing, and it won't be for Boz's benefit, he has left. But in addition to, at least from my quick read of the Permit Navigator, Mr. Gero would also need a wetlands permit to be able to construct a road through the wetlands that are, as I understand it, the water source that you all use. That may give you some protection for what you were asking for. All these things are outside our control. They're state permits. So I think that's it on this. Is there something?
I thought he had said at one point that he was going to move the road from where it was originally.
I think I heard that too. I just wanted to say that there are state protections for this.
I would state that a little differently, Stephen. He was, Mr. Gero was asked whether he would put a road through there, and his answer was that he would not. I don't think he addressed what a future owner might or might not do, nor did he address where he would identify the road access on the plat that he submits, because it is also a requirement of the application to be identified. And it says he didn't specifically address that. So I interpreted what he said as just a personal representation as to what he would do.
All right, great. Thank you. We don't have it on the agenda, but I will address the turquoise division since you are here. We have a draft decision that we will be issuing very shortly. There's no discussion tonight. I'm sorry if you heard there would be. You're welcome to say a few words if you wish, but the decision has been.
I was wondering on the status of it all.
Yeah, we should have a decision for you in the next few days, I expect.
Okay.
So I think it will be mailed to you by faith. We'll figure out how it's going to get mailed to you.
You don't get it.
Okay, I was just saying, as you said, four, three weeks, you know, it's been four, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, we had 45 days from the hearing, and this is set 30 today. I think we'll have it in the next couple of days.
Okay, very good.
Sorry for the delay.
All right, thanks.
I do like to follow, I don't know, I think it might have been your brother who offered, but I think the town would still be interested in seeing that historical survey, if you have it.
And run that yet.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
No?
No.
Okay.
If you run into him, maybe if you could ask him.
Yeah, all right, very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All right, let's jump into Nick Stark. Thank you for your patience here again.
Of course.
Thanks.
So, you all might remember me from a few weeks ago. I'm back with a map, and I'm hoping to get a preliminary inventory of assets within your community which you would like to have on the Rutland Ramp map. So.
Can we roll it out?
Yeah, it'd be great.
We're going to do our best on Zoom, Andy.
Yeah, apologies.
Do you have a link, or is this available online at all, or I should have asked ahead of time?
It may, it would take me a minute to set up, and I couldn't get it out.
Hey, you must. You're not here. It's summer.
Yeah, I thought you were back over there.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
I thought you were coming back like yesterday.
Can we use the maps that we've done for the town plan facility?
Well, we'll hear what he wants on it, I guess, but yes, probably.
Yeah, if, so basically, I pre-populated with what I could find through public sources, including the E911 trails, any roadside historical markers, any national register historical places.
Tiny, like tiny pines.
But really, we're looking for like any historical, cultural, or recreational assets that you do want to be driving folks, either within your community or from outside of your community to. And the rich data that we're hoping to gather alongside just a position and name are,
I'm sorry.
whether the asset is ADA accessible, whether there's lighting after dark, like, you know, parking lot or something like that.
Optimistic, aren't you?
Hey, this is for the whole region, so. Pet friendliness, on leash or no leash or what, cost, public transport we don't need to worry about, and then how long people normally spend on average.
This is probably the closest analog we have, right?
Great.
This is our, you've seen this probably in another form, in digital form. Recreation map for a town, recent town plan.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, there's, you know, not much, but, you know.
More than showed up on my map. What, oh, it's a Vass trail.
Yeah, Vass and Catamount there. Catamount's in blue.
Okay.
They are mostly on top of one another, except for down in here, they diverge.
Yeah.
Here they diverge.
Okay.
The Catamount sort of goes along the road, and then kind of goes up just in Ludlow and back this way.
Okay.
And over this way.
And.
There's a Viewscapes and stuff, and pull-offs for the Pemo Summit and stuff. So that's the summit, Fire Tower,
Okay.
which is now a historic site. Just recently got that.
Wow. Okay, where, who made this map?
We did.
You did? Okay. Do you have the GIS files?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you think I can get those? Of course. That would be great, yeah. Okay, this is, yeah, fantastic start. And it seems like.
Sure.
Yeah, I actually noticed that hike.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a little wet, but it's fine. Yeah, you guys, by the way, I really haven't been here before. You guys have beautiful town. It's really beautiful, yeah. So I suppose what we can do is, if these are all in the GIS file,
Yep.
it seems a little redundant to list them out here by hand.
Probably.
Because I mean, for the most part, they're not going to be ADA accessible. They're not going to have lighting. Most of them are going to be friendly on leash, right?
Uh-huh.
They're all free and typical visit duration, you know, like, that's depending on the length of the trail, I suppose.
There's only one more trail.
Oh, really?
Like, I mean, you took a hike, but it was really the Vass trail.
Yeah, it was.
So there's only one actual hiking trail on the Healdon.
I'm just going to move this so we can actually see it on camera.
Oh, yeah.
And you can see, if I just go here, move that trail.
Sure.
Then while you point, you just stand inside that hill, I'll get it.
The Healdon Trail is the red dotted one.
Yeah.
These are some sort of spur trails that I just mapped with my own hiking, but they're not marked. This is the actual hiking trail.
Okay.
There is another, Andy, is the, what is it called? A Gork Trail, or is that Gork?
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's what it's called. It's a short trail up to the top of Proctor Hill there.
Okay, it's on Paul Newton's land?
Yeah.
No, it's, no, it's on the Native Foundation Foreminum Wilderness Conservation Land.
So that sort of.
But I thought it started on the tree.
Cool. I suppose that is a fair enough question, is like, you know, which of these, I mean, maybe that's something that we revisit, but like, you know, at least mentioning that ones that are unmarked, you know, we don't want to be sending like, you know, a family with kids out to.
It's funny you should mention that. That was a sort of hot topic for the town plan. We had some disagreements about that.
Right, yeah.
Some of us feel one way and some of us feel the other, you know, whether that kind of trail marking and stuff is advantageous or whatever, but. The stuff in the national forests is generally speaking, you know, at your own risk type of situation at the moment, there's no marked trails.
No, yeah.
There's parking areas, but basically just go do your thing. Mostly hunters and some mobileers mostly.
Yeah, there was a sign at least, which was like, you know, it was like, all right, at least I'm allowed to be here, which was nice.
For that one.
Yeah. Cool. So I mean, since that is going to be a good base that we can work off of. In terms of recreational, like historical assets, pardon, cultural and historical assets.
We have another one of that, I think. I mean, those are pretty, pretty slim too. I mean, I think Crowley Cheese.
Yes.
The museum is a big one.
Two branches.
Two branches of the museum. So the Perkins House and the, we call it the Will White Blacksmith Shop. I think that's our, I mean, those at that museum is excellent, so.
So, sorry, the names were?
There's two, well, I'll let the chair or the president tell you.
It's the Perkins House.
Okay.
And then the Will White Blacksmith Shop.
Okay, this is two different things. So there's Crowley Cheese.
Yeah.
Which is a.
Right, sorry.
Cheese factory.
Longest operating, continuously, continuously operated.
Factory in.
Cheese factory.
Right, that's, that's separate from the museum.
And then the other thing is the museum, which has two buildings.
And is that the Crowley Cheese Museum?
No, it's an operating cheese factory.
The museum is the, what is the museum?
Mount Holly Community Historical Museum. I think about it. Mount Holly Community Historical Museum. And that consists of two buildings.
We have another facility.
One is the Perkins House.
It's only facilities, man.
Which simply put is how.
Yeah, I thought the facilities only had like.
And the Blacksmith Shop is how people worked.
I can't remember. It's been too long.
Differentiated the two buildings.
And they're two completely different locations.
Okay.
Yes.
And we're sorry, what was the second one called?
Like the Will White.
Will White.
Blacksmith Shop.
All right, and let's get some. Do you have street addresses off the top here?
I'd have to look it up.
Blacksmith Shop, it's about forty, Towerville Road, maybe?
Well, it's all in GIS too, Nick.
Right.
It's what?
It's in GIS too.
Oh, fantastic.
And the, will be Perkins House, twenty-something.
I guess prepared for the, you're just about to tell me. So you probably don't care about fire hydrants. You might care about, hey, those didn't print out very well, did they? Jeez. Boat ramp.
Yeah. Cemetery.
Community facilities, which is like the Oddfellas Hall.
And do you know whether in the GIS file, whether like these specific points of interest have names associated? Or are these just like sort of dumb labels placed in the right position? Because I'm just thinking for like the cemetery, like, there's multiple cemeteries.
Right.
And will.
I think they have, I think they're all named.
Okay, great.
They have, yeah, they're all named.
Most of them come out of, there's already, there's already a state layer. There's a federal layer, which is the, the naming. G, GAFs or, there's a, there's a US naming database. All named places in the whole country.
Okay.
And it has a lot of these in it. We may have, I think I've tweaked some of the locations to be more accurate.
Gotcha.
I can send you anything that's on there that they have.
Okay, yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. And yeah, and most likely the.
Yeah, we have, I think all the cemeteries listed on here.
Okay.
Except for the family plots, but you know.
And there's a few of those.
So this is the municipal center where we are now.
Right.
So we're in that building. This has actually changed. We're on a date already.
Yeah.
Well, it's not really. I mean, we could call it, it's not ambulance service anymore. It's now rescue squad, but.
Gotcha.
Or first responder, whatever. Post office, that kind of stuff, services like that.
No, we're trying to keep it to just recreational, cultural.
So there's some recreation here, but it's, it's sort of public.
Okay, outside of school hours kind of thing? Yeah.
We take a pretty strict view on school hours used.
That's up to you all when you want to include it. You're not, you know, the idea here being that, you know, folks that are new to town or something like that.
It's our only park, it's our only playground, so I think we gotta put it in.
Yeah. Does it have a name?
Mount Holly School.
Playground?
Playground. There we go. We just named it.
We may want to tell the principal.
Yeah. Well, I didn't find out.
Yeah, we have a restaurant on here, but I don't know, is it still operating or?
Harry's?
Oh.
No.
Well, they, they just applied.
They, they just applied for a liquor license, but they are only going to be open for weddings, parties and stuff like that.
For the playground, is it ADA accessible? In that like there's a parking lot with a ramp that like?
It's pretty much all over.
Okay, so say yes. Well, no?
I don't think they've ever. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, the school should be ADA accessible from there. That kind of has to be, right?
I think the playground's wood chips. I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
I think you need a paved path to the ADA, but.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
I don't know. I'm not an expert in ADA.
Neither am I.
I don't think they reviewed the playground itself.
I don't know if anybody can say for sure.
All right, well, it's safer to say no then. Lighting after dark?
No.
No.
Not in the playground. The school has these blurry lights all around it, but.
Okay, yeah, but, yeah. Pet friendly?
No. They are not, pet unfriendly.
Free.
There's like ten signs up.
No. Public transport, typical visit duration.
For how long you play?
Yeah, for how long someone would go there.
Half hour, I believe. What are you playing on the playground?
Hour. Don't play on the playground, what you're telling me? I mean, if the school's closed, it's a court guy. I don't have time for playing. I got too many cows to milk.
I just figured John would be able to tell me how long you play those.
We'll say a half hour.
Yeah, they do have a kid, like, I don't know. Yeah, half hour.
Yeah, I mean, it's the only limitation really is, you know, when the school's in session. If it's not in session, I don't think there's any limitations.
Well, it's more to give folks a sense of, you know, because across all these different assets, it's like, if you're going to go see a war memorial, you're not going to spend two hours, you know. So it's to give folks like sort of a frame of reference of like how long they're, should expect to go.
In that case, but the thing they were just trying to get the repair done, the the World War II, I think it was, memorial. And by the community center.
Is that on there?
It's not.
No.
Okay.
No, it's just like right outside the door. The community center's on here.
Okay.
That's a, that's an asset. It's a pull of the library. The library, you consider that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Library.
What's the name?
Community Center.
Oh, it's one of the same?
Same building.
Okay.
One's upstairs, one's downstairs.
Does the community center have a name? It's just the Mount Holly Community Center?
Well, it's the Mount Holly Community Association Room or something.
I think the sign outside it says Mount Holly Community Association Library and Community Room or something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Community. Mount Holly.
No one, you don't know what you're going to tell.
Mount Holly Community Association Library and Community Room. Is my, how I remember seeing the sign. I think sometimes people call the whole thing the community center, but.
Gotcha.
That's a little bit confusing too.
That must be ADA accessible, right?
Uh, yes. Yes.
It is a random library and the community centers are ground level.
Okay.
When someone shows up to shovel it.
Yes.
Lighting, yes.
The snow gets a little deep there.
Lighting, there isn't actually any exterior lighting, is there?
We want to be a dark town.
They're not going to have extra dark.
Okay, no. Pet friendly.
There might be some lights down when they open the community center, but.
Yeah. I guess we'll say.
It's not lit.
How they feature is where you can get free internet.
That's nice.
And snowshoes.
Do they have a website?
Yep.
Okay.
We have the proper, favorite thing.
I don't remember where it is often.
I should be able to find it then.
You can hear. Picnic area?
Picnic area.
Starlight Recreation Area.
Great. Does that have a, does that have a street address?
Lake Street.
It's on, it's, well, the access is basically off of Lake Street.
Okay.
It would probably be the same address.
It would be nice if it did actually have an E-911, but I don't think it does.
Okay.
My opinion, for what? It's where nobody cares.
You could use the Oddfellas Hall address.
Yeah, you could, I think, and I think probably the E-911 coordinators at the state think the same thing. Everything should have an address.
Yeah.
So you could get, you type it into a map and it'll, right there, but we're not there yet.
ADA?
Nope.
Uh, no lighting, pen?
No. Luckily, there's one street lamp.
Yeah, but it's not over by the.
It's not over by the.
It's not Oddfellas Hall.
Okay. Uh, pet friendly on leash?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Depends who you ask, but I think officially, yes.
Yeah, as long as they chase the geese, there you go.
Great. And there's like, what, a boat ramp, fishing?
It's, it's, the boat ramp is sort of adjacent to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's swimming.
Fishing, swimming, right here.
There were a bunch of people fishing. I just drove by there.
Swimming, swimming until the end of night.
I saw like ten people.
Oh, really?
There's lily picking.
Yeah. Lily picking, okay. That's a new category.
Well, so we have it listed as a swimming area.
Okay.
I think on paper it's still, you know.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's, you know, less and less usable as the swimming area.
Sure. Millflow or?
Well, there's a little bit of that, mostly.
You can almost walk on the lily pads.
Okay.
Or lilies is a big one.
Just came back after we got rid of the Millflow.
Oh. The typical visit?
There's a boat ramp. Speaking of boat ramps, there's a boat ramp at Nivavah, which is very important.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a public, that's a public one.
N-I-N?
A lot of fishing access.
N-I-N-E-V-A-H, Lake Nivavah.
Lake Nivavah or Nivavah Lake?
Lake Nivavah, okay.
And that's a state.
State.
Fish and wildlife boat access.
It's a fishing access.
Fishing access.
So you can launch boats, you can launch non-motorized boats there.
I'm surprised that didn't pop up in recreation inventory. Yeah.
And who's yours? What's in ours?
No, I think it was ACCD put together this like really messy inventory.
It's in the, it's in the state, so there's another state GIS database called Recreation Access. It's a no.
Yeah, that's kind of why it didn't pop up here maybe. ADA?
Sometimes, you have to be a little careful around here. Sometimes it gets stuck in the wrong town by accident.
Right.
And we're on the edge of accounting.
Yeah.
So if you're querying the database for stuff in Mount Holly, you'll miss all of this.
Yeah.
Partly because the E-911 address for these things.
Is with Ludlow, gotcha.
Because the road comes from Ludlow.
Right. Okay, that's probably why it didn't pop up.
And also part of the road that passed the boat access is in the other county. Right, the road name changes and then comes back.
Oh, my gosh.
The numbers change too.
I'll bet. All right. That boat access, that's probably ADA, right?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a, it's a parking lot and it has a sloped access, you know, paved access to the.
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, it's like so long as there isn't like a staircase in between it, you know?
There's no staircase.
There's no staircase there.
Hey, it's downhill. You get, get going right, you'll get wet.
No lighting, pet friendly on leash. Uh, free. No transport, I'll say an hour. Great.
I guess for the, I just think the museums, they're open, you know, from May through end of August and by appointment. And it's only, generally only on the weekends.
Okay, you know, what we're doing for, that's good to know, is it like?
It's like from Memorial Day till cider days, I think, September.
We normally, what we're hoping to do is just direct people to the website where the most current like hour and opening information is going to be. Are those free or?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
But we will accept money.
Yeah, we're going to be encouraged to give a donation.
W-W-T shirt.
Oh. Uh, in here?
Uh, yes. Well, the, the ramp into the Perkins House, and you can stay on the ground floor. You just can't get upstairs.
But the.
The Blacksmith Shop, you come into the parking lot, parking spot and get in. But there's stairs to get to the back where the server is and the post office. So it's quasi, I don't know, better to say no, I guess.
Okay.
I mean, we've got the ramp, but you only can use the ground floor of the Perkins House.
You only have partial access.
All right.
Great.
Ochemo Mountain Resort.
Is that?
Nope.
Where is that?
In Ludlow and Mount Holly.
Okay.
The Summit Lodge and the Summit Lifts are all in Mount Holly.
We, we don't have on the recreation map the new conservation conserve property between West, with Sherwood Weston on Route 100. There you go. We do? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
Ochemo Resort, is that, you have a street address? All right, just quick.
Sorry, what was the question?
The street address for the Ochemo Resort, it would be, are we saying like the lodge or what do we say, which is the whole complex?
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's in Mount Holly.
Yeah.
The top of all the roads are in Mount Holly.
Right.
Yeah.
As is the summit lodge.
But the access goes through Ludlow, right?
Yeah.
The base lodge is in Ludlow, the summit lodge is in Mount Holly, so.
Figure that one out.
Yeah.
You don't want to direct people to Windsor.
No, yeah.
How about those guys?
All right, well, I'll look up because we're like for GPS directions. And I guess it'd be the Ludlow address for the parking lot. I'm guessing that's the ADA. And lighting, yes.
And in the summer, Mountain Road, you know, the ski trail, there's Mountain Road that gets you up to the.
Yeah, the Lookout Tower, Lookout Tower. Yeah, the Lookout Tower, Lookout Tower.
And there's a, and there's a bunch of uh, parking areas to look at different stuff on the way up or down.
That's your water from the other side, I didn't.
All right.
Um.
But that, oh, but the problem is that whole road is in Windsor County.
Yes. Okay.
Gets up there.
Uh, any other historical assets? I mean, we've got already all the um, cemeteries, which was, I think, a big one that I saw just driving around.
There's only a lot of those.
Yeah.
The, the museum has the terrestrial, uh, the mammoth, the state terrestrial.
What's this?
That's within the museum.
That's in the museum.
Oh, in the museum, okay.
Um, there's also, did you get the Odd Fellows Hall?
No, is that, um?
It's next to Star Lake, it's on Lake Street.
Is that, um?
Cultural asset, I suppose.
Okay.
You can hire it for parties.
Okay, cool.
Right. Other words, where the community tends to have parties.
It had some rolling.
Parties and dinners.
Be labeled with a community facility.
What about the Rainbow Riding? Is it, uh, is it a equestrian center?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, but it's not.
Let you guys.
It's not really recreational riding.
Well, it's also not a public, you can't just turn up and ride.
Okay.
What?
It's a therapeutic riding center and you have to.
Public.
You have to be referred to.
If we showed up, you'd buy us a coffee.
Just for.
I did buy you a coffee, but you wouldn't be able to ride any horses.
Just for um, the argument's sake, so if, if there was a, a nearly six-year-old girl who, who was very interested in riding, she couldn't just like come by or?
No.
No.
Uh, not with rainbow riding, but there may be some horses now that are not part of rainbow riding that might be riding.
Oh.
But you can also.
There's no lessons or anything.
Uh, you could speak to rainbow riding because they do also have lessons for people who haven't been referred for some reason, especially children.
Just, just saying, somebody I know might be interested in, and whose daddy doesn't want to get a horse, just saying.
You can rent one.
This, this, some of the season's a bit curtailed, but.
Yeah, this dude wanted me to, but.
You, you might become friendly with the family that just left here.
Who's getting rid of horses?
No, but they have a batch, you might be able, if you got friendly enough with them, you might be able to ride one or two.
Yeah.
Um, there's a marker on one oh three, I forget.
They got a giant one, so.
No.
Very much that one.
Really?
Wait, I'm thinking with um, railroad mystery?
Um, yeah, the, the.
Summit Station.
Summit Station.
Summit Station is gone unfortunately.
Yeah.
Is there a marker here?
There's a marker on one oh three for railroad history.
Okay, yeah, um, all right, that one I should be able to figure out. So i- is this, is this for drop-ins mostly? Yeah, the idea is that like, yeah, people could just kind of like look it up and find something you're doing on a Saturday or something.
They do say, um, we operate outdoors, offer lessons each year from May, yada, yada, uh.
Who's this?
Rainbow Riding.
Well, Faith.
But, but if it's.
I would say Faith is definitely the expert on rainbow riding.
Yeah, okay.
Just buy some shit.
Also, just curious if it's, if it's a drop-in only, got it.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's not dropping.
Authoritative source.
Yeah, because when people drop in, I have to go to tell them that there's no riding for them.
More, more of the day.
Okay, so that's the kind of thing I think we probably want to leave off.
Yeah. Um.
Because this is a site, this is a thing that people will see it on there and will go to.
Precisely, yeah.
Now, if you want to become part of it, then.
Um, and that's, it's another one that's basically in that same category, that it is a cultural, historical asset, but it is very much private property.
Hmm.
And that's the Corbu.
Corbu?
Yeah, which is the um, National Historic designated property on um, Dolly Road.
Uh, sorry, C O R B?
You have a secret.
Oh, I do?
Yeah, you already got it on there, it looks like.
Scoville Anthony House?
Anthony Scoville.
Okay.
Was the architect, but it is a um, a modernist design sort of based on or inspired by the architecture of Cabuzier, French.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
It's a private house.
Corbu for Cabuzier for short.
Gotcha, and are they?
It's a private dwelling, I'm, I'm pretty sure they don't.
Encourage.
Either.
Okay.
I don't know for sure, but I, I would.
We could leave it off then, unless like, you know, you know that there are already people like stopping and looking for the road or something like that.
You can't really see it very well from the road.
Oh, but you have enough, yeah.
And you can't buy it for two million.
Cottage on the National.
See what I can scratch up.
Green Mountain Cottage is also on the National Historic Registry and it is also private property.
But you can't see it from there.
You can definitely see it from the road.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
But yeah, we, we, do you have a column in there like, public access, no?
Uh.
Not really.
Not really, um, probably put mostly things on here that people want to do and see, yeah.
It is sort of slightly unfortunate that it's, I think she has a sign out front saying Green Mountain Cottage, but it's um, it's not an inn, it's not a.
Right.
It's a, I think she does sort of rent it out, but.
Okay.
You can't just like, do you have a room?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, all right, well, then you think she has a website?
I doubt it.
Okay.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Um.
And it's either the post office or the church, it's the highest active one in the state.
The post office.
I think it's post office that's higher. So we do still have two, two post offices in town.
Really?
Three, three zip codes, but two, yeah, there's three zip codes.
I did notice that like, uh, Belmont and is that what it is, like it's different?
Mount Holly and East Wallingford.
And East Wallingford.
Wow.
Yeah, well, it's right, because we only have like.
And they're all with like three lots.
Well, the, the really bizarre thing is that if you live on this side of Tarvelville Road, all the way up to the top, where you're a hundred less, fifty feet from the post office, you're in East Wallingford.
Who's that delivering?
You're in East Wallingford, zip.
Zip, yeah.
And they're all managed by the same municipality though, right? You're all.
Really? Oh, but it's a federal thing.
Okay, but I mean, you say like, I'm just curious, there, there was just one select board for the entirety?
No, Mount Holly is the, Mount Holly and Belmont, East Wallingford is part of.
He's not, he's talking about the town, not the post office anymore.
We, we, one town, one select board.
Okay.
But there's, but there are three zip codes that are.
Confederate.
Federal boundaries.
Okay.
Yeah.
And some of them spill over into like Wallingford.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so zip codes don't.
Spills over to here.
Zip codes don't have a um, political boundary, so like they, they expand town boundaries.
Okay.
Um, the forest on the aisle road, uh, government road, we have, we must have that on there.
Uh.
Well, there's a parking lot.
Is it?
There is a marker, right, from the revolution, um.
It's on, the parking lot is on there, is that right?
No, the, the, the.
Well, there's the trail.
The trail, the, the one that Dennis is involved in, the uh.
Yeah, Road.
Crown Point Road?
Huh? Yeah, the Crown Point Road.
We're talking about two, two, two different conversations happening.
Sorry.
Faith was asking about the government road, the park, parking lot.
Which has a trail running from it, no?
Vass, Vass Trail. And Catamount. Well, I mean, you could hike, so, so when the Vasts and Catamount are on federal or state land, you can hike them.
Hmm.
When they're on private land, you can't, which is tricky, because there's a sign that says, this is private land, this is federal land, this is state land.
Right.
But, you know, that's where like, you know, some, some real savvy hikers or hunters will use like Omex or whatever to track out where you are, but um, yeah, it's tricky. So this is, so Faith was asking about the government road, which is this road, it is a.
Like a forest or trail?
Well, it's called a state forest highway.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so, and it goes to here, there's a winter gate here.
Okay.
And then there's another gate, permanent gate, well, except for big nuts, they open it for snowmobiles, it's right about there.
Gotcha.
Um, unless you're, unless you're me. I, I get through, but um. There's, I mean, the, the, the hiking is basically what they call the spur cycle, you can hike, you know, a lot of people do hunting like down here and stuff, but. Um, the, the trail is this, which is vast.
Gotcha.
And you can go the other, I mean, there's a lot of parking.
Yeah.
This is the parking lot that has the National Forest sign.
Okay.
But very confusingly, I think, has no trail associated with it, there's a nice big, you know, National Forest sign and you, you know, people get out there and they're like.
Where are you going?
What do I do?
Yeah.
Nothing. But from heat, from these guys, there, there are places you can go, there's a, there's a trail that kind of goes that way and then this way.
I mean.
This is an old road, this was, um, I think it was called. Old County Lane back in the day, I don't know, we don't have any real old timers here, you don't count, you'd have to have a dentist or a gay there or something, but this goes back like a hundred years, so this is an old road, but it's um, it's a cool place to hike.
Yeah.
Nice. It's great. Andy doesn't know about that room.
I don't know about it, I just don't know the name of it.
It's cool though, because you walked down there, right?
I walked out, it's a green deal all the way down.
Yeah, green deal, yeah. But yeah, it's like, it's amazing how straight this goes, basically straight down in the car, yeah.
Yeah, you can skate down that, I skied from that, fortunately, the other car at the other end.
For uh, Oddfellows Hall, is that ADA accessible?
Is that on a ramp?
Yeah, there's a ramp.
There's a ramp.
Okay.
Because the, everything's on the ground floor.
Okay.
The upstairs is private.
And there's lighting from the parking lot, right?
Yeah, kind of.
Yeah, okay, you, you, uh, lot pet friendly, free?
Yeah, we've got our, sort of, kind of general store.
Oh.
Kind of. Nothing, yeah.
In there, supposedly it's gonna be. Oh, the Belmont?
Working Perkins.
Great.
The, the one for future visitors store.
Yes.
I won't put it on until this is open, uh, yeah, um, is that going, because I drove by the Belmont General Store, that's the same, one of the same, okay, cool.
It was and will be a general store.
Okay.
So we're told.
So we're told, yeah.
Okay, in there, um, yeah, if you all want me to put it on, I can, I just wouldn't want to be directing folks there.
No.
I don't care.
It's within spitting distance of the library, community center, museums.
Okay.
Oddfellows.
Don't see it.
May as well just wait till it's open, I guess.
Okay. Um.
I think the, what is the tomb of the, from the Revolutionary War of the soldiers?
Plymouth.
I think that's in.
Plymouth.
The other county.
Okay.
Right?
Plymouth, yeah.
Yeah, Plymouth, so I forgot that one.
And this, I don't know where you get this terminology, whilst it was Mechanicsville, it's not anymore, it's Belmont, there is Mechanicsville somewhere.
So I think that is a nationally registered historic district?
Yeah, that's cool.
Cemetery, would that be the cemetery?
Nationally registered.
I'm sorry, uh, state, state register, uh, historic district.
Well, we have a Belmont Village designation, but it's not a historic district.
There is a.
Oh, you know what this is? Sorry, it, it's poorly labeled, but the Belmont Historic District is this shape and then the Village in Mechanicsville, that's the roadside marker. Which I drove by.
Right, the roadside marker, yeah.
Yeah, historic roadside marker, it has like.
Right.
It's right there?
It's, it's right by the blacksmith shop.
Uh, that, yes, but.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, no, uh, but it's not a historic district.
There's a state, there's, in the state registry of historic places, Belmont is a historic district.
Which, fortunately, doesn't offer any protections, but it can help you with like getting grants and stuff like that.
So they say.
Uh, if we do, okay, the Mount Holly School, that is a playground, are there, do you all have like playing fields or anything like a?
Sure. There is still a remnant of a ball field.
Do we want to send people there?
Doubt it.
Okay.
Definitely don't want to send them there during school time.
Right. Um, I think that's everything I have on here, uh, I'm really curious to go see the Corbu House, um. Uh, but these are a fantastic start, I say, I hope, um, I'll have to see, hopefully, all the other channels have theirs as nicely, um, put together. Um.
Would, I'm just thinking Farming Wilderness has a camp.
Hmm.
And then, right, Andy?
The camp's down on water.
Yes, yes, that's right, right.
Same camp, it's a problem.
I don't know if that would, it's, but it's not, you know, you gotta sign up and join, it's not, you just can't show up there.
Yeah, I think that's, well, it's part of the.
But you gotta sign up, how far in advance, Andy, do you have to sign up, like in the winter, isn't it?
Oh, it's, you send your kid there.
They're like week long.
Oh, it's like a, like a rec camp, okay, yeah, yeah.
And there's, there's, there are a number of them, there's one there, and then I think for the smaller kids, there's one up Route one hundred.
Okay, um, are they?
Yeah, so there's one of site of Farming Wilderness Camp Complex in Mount Holly, but it is a private camp.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm also a little scared of like kind of tipping our toe into childcare and stuff like that, because like that was a question with whether uh, those places constitute as eligible for being on the map. Um, so I'd say unless, let's go back to that rule of if you can't show up, um, then we're not.
Can't show up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, also, since it's, it's, it's a regular, regular, with a minimum of, I think, uh, one week, so it's not true, you're really local, childcare, it's really. And you, you know, you may have worked.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, it's, it's.
Okay, yeah, I think we're safe to leave that one off. Um, all right, any bottom of the barrel last thoughts in terms of cultural or historical?
I mean, the, the, I don't know if you have like a list of like potential uses for each of these sites, but the Niva access is, um, is pretty popular with ice fishing too.
Oh, nice.
Put that on there.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any shit these out on Star Lake.
I went ice fishing out there once, well, for experience, but.
Actually, I don't know about ice fishing out there, but I know.
If you convince the state to let us get rid of the, you know, dredge the lake.
Killed the fish.
And uh.
I mean, and basketball.
Good luck.
Get rid of the uh, lily pads.
Yeah.
Then you can have a lot of fun.
Yeah, we're dealing with the same thing, my dad has a camp on Lily Park in Polting, and uh, it's just wild how much it's changed in some of his camps.
Well, they constituted as a, what was it, a dammed swamp.
Oh, interesting.
They won, yeah.
Is there a dam?
Or like, there's a dam there, yeah.
Like manmade or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Very much so.
Very much so.
Okay.
Which the state was hoping we wouldn't be able to do.
Oh, interesting. When was that built?
Which is built, what, within the last ten years?
Oh, wow.
Historic. Yeah, but the original, the original dam was built by.
And they, well, there was a sawmill there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventeen nineties, probably.
It was the factory where they made the, what's it called? The red flyer, the, those little.
The wagon?
Yeah.
No way.
Yep.
Yeah, they made, used to make. Chase, the Chase toy factory. And the Odd Fellows Hall was the paint shop, I believe.
No way. I didn't know. But it didn't come from here originally.
Yeah.
Radio.
Yeah, the, I think so. The Chase toy factory was the one that invented the radio flyer.
Red wagon?
Yeah.
Wow.
Was it that or was it the sled?
I thought it was the wagons.
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't remember hearing that.
Um.
One point it turned into a, a rape factory at some point, but I think it was toys first, I think.
No, the rape factory was down at the end of Tarvelville.
Oh, that was down the end. Oh, okay.
Well, uh, next steps I'm thinking, it'll be great to get these and bring them into here. Um, and what I'll do is I'll digitize this and sort of send you all, um, I'm building a tool so that you can both see this spreadsheet and the map at the same time. Um, and be great to have, you'll just sort of take a look at it and make sure that everything looks correct. Um, and then other than that, you know, that's it. Um, we're still determining like an interval in which we'll be able to come back to municipalities and check in and be like, is there anything new? Is there anything that needs to change? Um, but if, you know, at any point after the site goes live, which will most likely be in the next year, it's still very up in the air. Um, then, uh, you know, feel free to email me. I'll give you all my card, um, if you want to see anything changed.
Well, one, one thing I was curious about, probably you already know the answers, but I'll, I'll ask anyway, is you may find, or, or getting this information out there, it may become more obvious that we may not have as many of these sites as some other towns do. And I would be very interested to hear whether that, um, hmm, motivates or, or, or provides any justification for us getting any funding for added things.
Oh, that's a big reason why we're doing this.
Okay.
Uh.
It's like, you know, I, my personal opinion, I know it's not universally held by this commission, but is that it would be nice to have an all ages recreation site where people with dogs, kids, older folks could go and like do a short hike. I think that would be something that would be a real benefit to the town.
Yeah.
And like bring people in that could, you know, re-energize our community in some sense, but.
Yeah. No, I mean, and you know, the long-term goal for this is not only for it to be sort of like a, an asset for, or a tool for folks who live within the region and, you know, uh, outside to see what's available to do, but also again, for the planning commission to be able to look at your assets and say, like, oh, look, we have all these here and be able to overlay sidewalks, for example, and be like, oh, there's a lot of, you know, kids going, I mean, bad example because, uh, but like, let's say there's a lot of kids going from Star Lake to, uh, the Belmont General Store, but there's no walking path. There's no, um, you know, ADA accessible sidewalk or something like that. That's when you'd be able to take this, go and look for, for funding. Um, so we are hoping that it will be used.
We, we don't have a lot of kids in Belmont, but we do have a lot of seniors.
Yeah.
Who are, many of them are asking for a walking path because they don't want to walk on whatever.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah.
No, that's our.
Everything has to do with, um, the town not footing the bill is basically, but.
Sure.
We don't get too much done if we ask taxpayers to pay for it, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of people are on tight budgets and, you know, we just don't, and the costs are like I'd say one of the major factors, so.
Yeah.
You know, and some people don't even like the grants. I love the grants because then the taxpayers don't have to pay. But, um, yeah, so I think that's, if this brings money our way, I think that would be pretty interesting.
Definitely, yeah, and that's, that's our hope.
Do you, just to change the subject a little bit, do you get involved with grants or?
Yeah, certainly. Uh, perhaps not myself, but, uh, the RPC most certainly can, can assist.
Because the, uh, museum, we need, we're gonna have to spend a significant amount of money repairing the blacksmith shop.
Okay.
Because the walls are going out.
Yeah.
Because it's on a rock foundation.
Oh, interesting. Huh. So normally where it would like settle into the ground more, it's now just being forced out. Interesting, yeah.
We're having, we're having these, we're gonna be spending significant amount of money once we find somebody to work on it.
That's, that's the big problem too.
But we're need, we're, we're gonna need to find grants.
Yeah. Um, definitely.
And then get an email from it.
Sure, and you know, I've been in conversations, I'm writing the historical, cultural, archaeological and, um, uh, scenic resources chapter for the 2026 regional plan and, uh, I've been speaking with, you know, the preservation trust, uh, the Vermont State Historical Society and such. Um, so those lines of communication are open and they might be able to be, you know, of more expertise than.
I appreciate it. Uh, yeah, we're still trying to find the, the estimate for, you know, what needs to be done.
Sure, yeah. Um, but yeah, certainly. And, you know, any, any questions for that type of, if you reach out. All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I'll shoot you an email, uh, in the follow-up.
Yeah, yeah, please remind me and I'll send you those two guys.
You know, if, John, if you get a horse, I'm sure somebody would let you keep it on their property.
I don't want to.
It's violent, right?